I'd like to call the working session of the Chisholm School Board to order. Lisa, we're going to have a vote call please.
Director Satter?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Flavio Simon?
Here.
Director Laffey?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here.
Board chair.
Here. Okay, next time we have to through the agenda, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Daniela's support.
Support.
Vote by Mark. Comments or questions on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In case anybody didn't know, this is strictly discussion, there will be no action taken at this meeting. So, moving on to discussion, item A is Barbara Darland from the Darland Marketing Solutions LLC. The floor is yours.
The floor is mine. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to the school board and also the general public about the opportunities for Chisholm Elementary School and the wonderful referendum that passed in November. You have received from me a proposal for two parts of work. The first part would be a communications plan over three years' time, specifically 12 quarters, talking about the construction aspects and our work towards building the school itself. Also, we would talk about all the good work happening within the school, the Chisholm schools. The second work that we are proposing is a rebranding, naming of the school. In addition, that would come quickly, that work would be done, I would like to have it done by August or September of this year. Now, it doesn't have to be done that quickly, but the proposal is that if it's done quickly, then there is more opportunity when the littles come on board, that everything is in place for them with a new name and everyone is fine into that. And this is not a top-down structure, it's not me telling you what to do, this is inclusive. This is including board members, this is including people of the general public, also schoolteachers, students also should be included as well. So, the proposal for the communications work is over, like I said, three years' time, so that seems to be a little bit larger dollar amount, however, Ingenza, your partner, is offsetting that by some dollars as well. So that brings that down to $27,000 over three years' time. I could go on and on, but questions?
I have, you know, we have a person that does social media.
Yes.
Can you work with that person?
I certainly would love to work with that person.
And how would that work, I guess?
So I've been in marketing field for about 30 years, and what I've discovered is coordination and collaboration is really key to making sure that your messaging is strong and consistent. So, for instance, we shared some, we shared a press release with the media. We had 17 media outlets, and we had four of the major TV stations pick up the information about the construction process right now. And so we hope to include that with social media posting and maybe scheduling out some good work as well in connection with other public-facing communication, larger than just social.
Can I ask why, I mean, I think there's a few of us on the board that don't understand, referendum has passed, so what is the benefit in us? Like, why, why do we have to continue to advertise the building process when we're such a small, small community as it is? The word's out there, we do have somebody that does a great job on our social media site, so why that? And then my second question is, why the rebranding? I mean, we've got this proposal, but that rebranding also goes into the letterheads, and I talked to our local guy, and so I'm just trying to understand, you know, because there, you've got this much, you know, a total of $47,000, but yet, we have the logo already, why are we re, we use the logo at the VON as it is now, it's, it's a school-wide logo, so why are we rebranding? What are we doing? Why do we need to do that? We're not, I think everybody is not really, you know, the, it's, we're the Blue Streaks, that's who we are.
Exactly, right.
So can I help a little bit, just so that everybody hears and is on the same page? So, you have one opportunity to do this type of work. So you're opening up a brand-new building, and my previous site that I came from, they had something called the Red Plan, and the Red Plan actually closed a number of buildings and opened new buildings. With that merger, the new buildings received new names, some new logos. They all fell under the same district name as per se, and I think you witnessed what happened on your building tours, that even though we went to Rock Ridge School District, we toured Laurentian Elementary School. So, you're taking two sites with two separate names and identities and merging them into one, and you have an opportunity to name it. The Department of Ed currently has site numbers for our sites, and we're going to have to change that site number. 301, 302, 303, and 090 off the top of my head, I think, is early childhood. So, when we do our application, we'll do an application for a new site number, let's say it's 305, and they'll ask us what the school name is. So, it's a one-time shot to do this, and if you look at our neighbors, you have a district-wide high school state, high school league logo name, but yet, their elementary buildings, they have the Jefferson Jaguars and the Washington Wolves. Now, their middle level are the Little Jackets. So, those came from thoughtful planning and naming and everything else. So, when you hear rebranding, or you hear, it's really messaging that you have an opportunity to have stakeholders involved in a conversation on what should our school name be? What does that look like? What does it sound like? And I went through it, I lived it, when it happened in Duluth, and I actually was part of a process where they closed a school and opened a brand-new site that I was at, and it was a very healthy process where you got feedback from all the stakeholders, and it's a good thing to work through. And when you think of our communications, social media is one touchpoint. It's one area. You have a large piece of pie out there, and that's a sliver of it. Your other communications are the newspaper, and you have TV, you have radio, you have other touchpoints to try to reach a broader audience. So, if that helps kind of explain?
Honestly, in my head, I thought it was going to be elementary school, high school, isn't it?
That's what I had in my head too.
That's exactly what I had in my head.
I would call this the Chisholm Elementary as it is now.
This was elementary.
And the VON was just kind of up on its own.
So, that had a different name, but that's going to be gone. So I just, I don't know, it just seems to me that sometimes simple is better.
So far, if, for an example, we have a Rock Ridge School, and they named ours Laurentian. So we're very fond of the Chisholm Blue Streaks.
Right, absolutely. It has a long history.
So, let's just say for argument that we name it Blue Streak Elementary. What does that change? Anything? Nothing. Hiving has separate elementary schools, they've got about different names. We're the Blue Streaks. No, you could name it Doc Graham Elementary School, Field of Dreams Elementary School, just pick something, okay? Just throwing it out there. I'm not, you know.
The opportunity, the opportunity you have with the campus, which I think is tremendous, to bring everything under one roof, which I love, and Blue Streak Elementary, or Chisholm Elementary, whatever it happens to be, rebranding is kind of, I see why it set everybody off by using that word. It was not the intention to go away from the Blue Streaks. It was not the intention to go away from the logo. The intention was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, pull it all together, make sure that all the logos look and feel the same across E through K, E through 12, excuse me. So just bringing things into a really nice format that everybody can get around. The logo itself may or may not change, it may slightly change. It's not going to be purple and green. It will always be blue and red. It will always be the Chisholm Blue Streaks. But naming of the elementary school within the campus of the whole, of the whole, doesn't make sense. It, it should be a simple process, to everybody's point, this should be a very simple process. But I could walk around this building and find your logo looking different everywhere, and it should look the same.
But now your, your draft here of what I've read through and what I've gone through, that I also went through with a local gentleman that does logos and creates logos, nowhere in here do you have putting that in the buildings, and if you're changing the logo, now we've got to go to the high school, you got to, that logo's in the gym floor, that logo's on walls. So, what's that cost going to be? We're looking at just under $50,000 to pay you to make a new logo when we could probably keep it local, meaning to be honest, for a little bit cheaper. And if, and we just started using this logo, from what I've been made aware of, this, this logo that we're using this year is an older logo that has not been used, and it's going across the boards this year, so I just, I, I'm curious, you know, it's a lot of designing of the logo, meeting with, that's what your description is. So if we took, if we, as a school board and as a school district, made that decision to say, "We're not changing the logo," what can you, I mean, is there another, can you just help us with advertising and getting that other information out that maybe, you know, is necessary for the community to see? I, you know, I mean, is there another way to look at it? Because, talking to people, the logo thing is not something teachers want, anybody that works in the schools, I don't think after going after a referendum, we should now hit community members that have such good pride, you know, a lot of people take pride in this Blue Streak, and take pride in our logo and everything, and wear it with pride, that we should be changing that logo at all, because then we're going to have a lot of community members pretty upset with us.
It happens often, believe it or not, there's slight modifications to all branding.
Yep.
So it's not a, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal.
Right.
And it has to be done with care and concern, which is why a collaborative process is important. To your point, you could have a local gentleman do it, a local person do it, no problem, but they should set some standards for how that is used. And I don't necessarily see that happening across the board here. So that's important, just for, if McDonald's per se use a different yellow or a different arch to tie it, you know, I mean, the logo is squashed in different places, it has a white outline, it's got a red outline, it's, you know, there's some consistency that needs to come in, and maybe your gentleman can do that work for you. It's just a proposal, and the communications aspect of it, yes, we need to continue to advance the communication, this is a continuation of what you started when you passed the referendum. So you wanted people to have a rhythm for how they see you and how they hear about you, and when the local media picks up on that local, I'm talking Duluth local, we don't know in Duluth what's happening in Chisholm, but it's very important. So, reaching our community with this level of professionalism is very important. And as we move through the process to get to the school, it's going to become even more exciting.
So as far as your reach?
Yeah.
We saw our superintendent on TV, he looked pretty doggone good. Where else, other than television, which is important, where else do you reach?
Adrian and I worked on that. We found 17 media outlets right now that we feel are a good fit. And some of them include, like, The Woman Today, which would be an interesting place to have an article written. It's a monthly magazine, it's free to the public, it's racked in Duluth. It may be racked up here, I'm not sure. So that's a piece that we can go for, Business Nori. Also is a wonderful publication for business-minded folks, and those business-minded folks live in Chisholm, in this area, they read that piece, either online or in print. So we have those two publications, the Duluth News Tribune, the Star Tribune has a local presence in Duluth as well. All of these are, all of these publications I have a personal connection with and have reached out to them, and they're all very interested in the progress of what's going on. And your storytelling, what's happening here in the elementary schools with your STEM programming and all of this interesting, amazing stuff is of interest to the media, and they like when stories are fed to them. So you have to always be communicating out to them what your stories are, because they don't know. No one knows internally what's going on. So having a connection here, which Superintendent Norman and I have, it's like, what's going on, feeds me a list, we interview the people, we write a press release, we send it to the media, and then I do follow-up and say, "Would you be interested in going up and talking to them?" And that's how the interviews happen. That's kind of the process of the communication effort. And again, it would happen over, it's not going to be every month, however, I would be reaching out every month, saying, "What's going on?" And if there's two or three things going on in the next three months, then we would do separate press releases on those. They should also be out on your website. They should also be out on your social media. So these are the pieces to connect with your social media person to keep a collaborative communication flow going between the external person and your internal person. It can be a really great team effort, for sure.
So the other thing that I just thought, just popped in my head, we had an election last fall. One of the candidates, the moderator said, "How do you propose to attract students and personnel?" And the candidate said, "Advertise, advertise, advertise." Candidate's correct. How do we advertise to draw people into our community and draw students to our school?
Well, interestingly, you bring that up, advertising has changed a lot, right? We used to have just three or four streams of effort that we could go out to for advertising. Really, right now, it's storytelling. If you tell me you have a STEM program for elementary kids, I'm interested. I'm interested in coming here for that reason. I'm not interested necessarily in, you know, it has to, it has to resonate me and my family and why I want to come to Chisholm and why I want to be a part of this community here.
And you can share the article that we're working towards right now, that's okay.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I've reached out to The Woman Today, who's very interested in doing a feature article in the August issue, which is the education issue. And so they will come up here, and they will sit with your folks and interview the women. So we have another press release going, the four ladies, where are their hands?
Yep, so it's going to be focusing on women working in STEM.
Yeah.
So our work experience program, Smart Lab, we just got back from Starbase, just some of the great things that we're doing and showcasing some of that work and featuring some of the folks that are in the trenches.
You know, another good example is, if you do watch local news, for instance, WDIO or Northland's News Center, and you may notice now that I'm telling you this, but all of a sudden you'll start seeing a lot of stories about the aquarium or the Duluth Zoo. For some odd reason, they have lemurs at the zoo, so it's like makes front page in the News Tribune, it makes, you know, the 6 o'clock news. It's not necessarily a huge story, the deck is also doing the same thing, but they have constant communication out to the media, and so they're being picked up for stories. Constant. So that's why you see these weird little things happening with places. Glensheen had that going for quite a long time. I can't turn it off, because I've been in this work for 30 years, so I immediately see it. So now I'm challenging you, you'll probably see the same thing when you watch the 5, 6, or 10 o'clock news.
I may, you know, don't think that the pushback is personally, with this referendum, it was a really hard ask at a really hard time in everybody's life, and
Yes.
we were thankful that the community came together, so we are, we are one to support local and this and that, and we don't really have enough money to finish all the projects we want. So that's what our hesitation is with dropping 50 grand, well, now it's down to 30, which is better, but, yeah, so we just got to make sure that we do our due diligence too for the community. That's why we have to ask, you know.
Absolutely. And marketing, quite frankly, marketing and what's considered advertising or marketing, strategic planning, is always looked at as an expense. It's really an investment, you guys.
Right.
And I have, for 30 years, told my clients the same thing. You need to invest in yourselves. Investing in yourselves by creating a consistent logo, a consistent name, a consistent communication plan. Whoever does it, it takes work, it takes a coordinated effort, it takes a single-minded person to get it done, someone that can be structured about it, not just happenstance. So that's what I would encourage you to do, is to consider the investment on top of the investment that the community has made in you as well, because the community, community has expectations as well. They have expectations for you for fiscal responsibility, but they also have expectations for quality and professionalism. So find somebody that can do that type of work for you and hire them, whomever it is, because that's really the key in whatever you do. And it's, you know, rebranding, for instance, logo, back to that whole thing, that investment's a one-time shot, then you're done. So it's an investment now for the future, for the littles that will have it as a preschooler, they'll have it all the way through. It's going to look very much like your logo, but it may change just slightly, and everybody needs to be on board with that, if that's the way you go.
But that's the biggest thing, I think we all have problems. We like this, we don't want it to change.
Yeah.
I know, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I'm all for the whole advertising, and I know that we have got to promote ourselves, and I mean, that's the things that have always been talked about. I just think that, um, being from here my whole life, I, what, when you're talking, I'm just hearing rebrand. And I, I just, I have to have time to wrap my head around that, because that, that isn't something I want to see happen. I want to see when the people come for an all-class reunion that it's, "Oh, this is the new elementary school, this is this high school." They had a hard time switching this from high school to, I mean, it was, yeah, I mean, it is, it's tough, and you know, I just can hear the chatter in my head, "Oh yeah, we got this referendum, and now you want to change everything, you want a molar," you know? And I just don't want to see that happen, but I'm not against the whole, I get that we have to do, you know, we have to promote ourselves and, you know, show people, and they like that too in this town. Oh, they'd love to see us, they, I'm sure they love seeing Mr. Norman on the news, and, I mean, they like that, I get that, but I, I just am having a hard time getting past the... But Ingenza knows, we had a hard time getting past tearing the building down, but...
So being that you're in marketing also, have you done research in the fact of, because you talked a lot about the news stations? Well, I'm going to, I'm a, I'm going to put it out there, I'm 37 years old, I've got two kids in this district, I don't watch the news.
Correct.
I will never see an advertisement for this school on the news.
Correct.
Now, I will catch Travis Nocke's posts on Facebook constantly about what's going on in our school, and I'm liking it, and I'm going through, and so how are we going to, because the people we want to get, it's not Cindy Rice that we're going after to, you know, get you to, you don't have kids that are coming to the school. We need to hit that age where they're coming to the schools. So, I mean, where's, in your research, what, where, what meet, you know, what outlet do we have to be advertising in? Where do we have to be to hit the people that have the kids that are going to come to this district, or the parents that are going to switch to this district? Where is that majority?
Well, it's still fragmented right now. I mean, I could ask every person here, where they get every person here, where they get their information, it's going to be a different answer, for sure. If you have one consistency, if you have Facebook, that is the community that already likes you, right? So it's not outside. You have to pay for that. Anything outside of your own little community, your own little world, you have to pay for. Google Ads, Facebook posts, boosted posts, Facebook ads, things like that, just to grow your presence. If you feel that Facebook is the way you really want to impact people, then you need to invest money in that platform and really research how you schedule the content, because again, it can't be inconsistent. Has to be thought through in a year-long plan, you're going to say this, that, and this over this time period, and so you move forward that way, for sure. But again, you would have seen, had the WDIO and Northland's News Center TV pieces been placed on social media, you would have seen them then. So there's that collaborative piece between external and internal
Yep.
that can really help with that, can help grow that, but you also have to boost and grow your Facebook presence to get to that outside community of people. And then you need to share with your friends who are outside of this community, you know what I mean? It's a whole different world than what it used to be. The news, the news at least has, has interest in having, you know, actual interviews and coming up and looking at the school and doing all the progress, so you have that, that's kind of bonus.
And since she's here, Marie also put the article in the newspaper, so that was good to see as well. So, did hit another media outlet.
Good, great.
Can I add something here?
Oh.
Sorry, I'm kind of, it's not my terms, but I'm listening.
Hi Jackie.
Some comments. So, I totally get, you know, the anxiety around rebranding, or, you know, the thought that now we, you know, have this referendum, what else do we need to do? I just want to remind everyone that your stakeholders also include that 65-plus non-parent, non-staff group. Remember, that's the group that carried your referendum. Those are your supporters, those are the people that, when you go back to the community, whether it's 20, 30, 40 years from now, that's going to give you the green light to do anything. That's the group that really carried this referendum forward, and so it's going to be important, yeah, I understand that we're looking at getting more kids and advertising towards parents on Facebook, but we can't forget that group that's also paying attention, and is really the reason why your referendum went forward. And after referendum, it's more important to communicate. One of the reasons why it was so hard to get that referendum to pass is, one, it was a big ask, but two, people didn't understand what was going on in the district. People didn't know what you were doing, and that was because the communication wasn't as robust as it should have been to make all of your stakeholders aware. And so I, I just wanted to add that in, and one of the reasons why we wanted to contribute something to this, because we know how important it is to continue that communication after referendum is passed. You need it to keep us of your community. You can't, you know, just go out and ask for money and then just kind of not communicate, because people would just think then that they're only coming to us when they want something. They're not truly genuine in keeping us engaged and involved in everything that's going on in that, in the district. And so whatever it may be, whether it's, you know, the branding, I don't think we like that work, or, you know, post communications, I think something needs to be done. And also just want to tie it back to your end, right? Communications was one of your goals to do and to continue to do, and so this is just helping the district give some options on meeting that goal.
So, Mark, you have something?
Yeah, I just, just a couple things, Mr. Darland, and I'll be honest with you, I had some difficulty finding information on your company, other than Facebook, and I don't do Facebook. So in your brief portfolio here, it says that you have expertise in coordinating complex projects, and you've got a couple other associates here. The one thing that I noticed is that I don't see anything, any expertise in schools, I mean, I mean, you're a founding member of the Duluth Central Alumni Association, we all know what's happening there.
What happens there, yeah, right.
So, can you, can you tell me some, about some of these, or at least one of these complex projects that you worked on?
Sure, sure. So I, I've been in the marketing field for, like I said, almost 30 years, several places. My last employment was at Giant Voices, was part of the JPG Communications Group, which is Jim Gouacca. My last employment was at Giant Voices, was part of the JPG Communications Group, which was Jim Guaki from up here on the range, um, many years ago. And I retired at the end of twenty-twenty-one, uh, because the agency work itself is very taxing, it's, um, very frenetic, we'll put it that way. So I decided I would retire and start my own business, which is why you don't see anything about Darnell Marketing Solutions, because it just kind of launched in June of twenty-two. And I decided at that time that I would become, um, independent and work with whomever I thought I would like to work with on interesting projects. What I landed in, uh, we'll talk complex real quickly here. What I landed in this year, um, December fifth is, um, I was hired to work for Bear Grease, the John Bear Grease sled dog marathon. Uh, I was hired to raise money for them. The race, uh, took place on January twenty-ninth, my contract was signed December fifth. And I tripled what my, um, goal was for them in six weeks. So the connections that I have, the people that I know, um, the complexity, meaning I work a lot in Google Sheets, I have a lot of, um, expertise in budgeing and figuring out. I don't have any background in schools, but I don't think I need to, just like with the Bear Grease. I don't own a dog, I've never been on a, on a sled dog, sled team. Every, every person I work with in my career, um, has been outside of what I do, which I like, because it gives me a different perspective. It makes me ask the questions that you may think you already know. And then I use words like rebranding and I blow it all up for you. Right? Which is the inconsistency, I should have, it shows my words more carefully there, but, um. And the other two associates that are with me, I've worked with them on a number of other projects as well. Sally and I have worked together on a lot of writing projects. She, she is the principal interviewer and, um, press release writer for your organization as we move forward for three years. And, um, Michelle, um, does terrific logo design. So she is the one that I would have selected to help modernize the logo, the current logo.
Then one last question, Sharon, in on your last page here, you're doing interviews, one to three interviews per quarter, who are you, who are you gonna be interviewing?
Um, the superintendent and I have been working on that. So for instance, we, we just talked about the four, with four women that we are interviewing this week. That will be a March press release under Women's History Month. So we will pitch that out to the media and then that press release will also be used by the women today for their, um, August article. And hopefully they'll be able to come up and take pictures and expand upon that as well.
So the four women?
Yes.
Are they from this district?
Yes, they're the, yes.
Okay, that's all that's.
CTE, STEM-related.
Okay.
So capitalizing on what's going on in the world, um, you know, International Women's Month is, is a pretty big deal. So we have some amazing women here, let's focus on them, they've probably not been in a spotlight before or had the opportunity to talk about what they do. So giving them that opportunity and really, um, highlighting them in this school is way to get people here. Again, STEM programming for elementary school kids, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good driver for why you would wanna come here as parents. You don't always have to pay money to advertise, it's about storytelling and it's about really getting out there and having meaningful information in the public eye. That's all we want anyways, we don't want garbage anymore.
Thank you. Anything else from the members?
I just have one more.
Okay, good.
How do you do a partnership with our social media person?
Ooh, well, we sit down, we talk, and then we figure out what the plan looks like. If we're doing communications over twelve quarters, I'm gonna say what we're gonna do, he's gonna say what he's gonna do and we're gonna work together to meld everything together.
And how often, basically, would you have to meet with that person?
Well, I have it on my, on my Google Sheet to, um, have monthly communication.
Okay.
With whomever is here, would be my point person. And then our, um, so if that was, for instance, if it was a April conversation that I have, then in May, we have a, um, interview scheduled, interviews potentially, and then in June, we do a release. And then that then just kind of falls forward. And already we know that March is International Women's Month, so we will be looking at twenty-four and twenty-five and saying, what can we do for that? That's the planning.
Okay, so to cap this all off.
Yes.
We have post-referendums, children's public schools investment, forty-seven thousand two, two hundred dollars, which everybody is kind of up in arms about, and I understand that.
Over three years.
Over three years, however, if we were to vote on this proposal, brand logo investment, we don't have to do that.
Correct, you can do either or or both.
Okay, so branding.
Yes.
Is just a name.
Well, sure.
Okay, it's Laurentian Elementary, it's.
Blue Streak Elementary.
Whatever it is.
Okay, then you need a logo or some identity for the school. Let's go, we should call it identity, not branding, maybe identity is a better way to describe it. A consistent identity, either for the campus or for the new elementary school? Does that make better sense to say identity than brand, you know? Maybe I'm still too much in my own world. We get, we do get trapped there in our own, you know, if I was a teacher, we do some things.
So, okay, hopefully I get, I get this cleared up from my own model of mind, but, uh, if we were to just do advertising, not that.
Communication.
Communication, which is needed.
Correct.
It is twenty-seven thousand dollars, over three years.
Correct.
It's nine thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
Okay. Members don't know, we have the money to do it, so I just want everybody to know that. This is nothing that we can't afford.
It would take a staff person longer to do that amount of work, probably. And because Ingenza is supporting that effort as well. So again, you know, with their, with their assistance, financial assistance, because they believe in the investment as well.
Okay.
But I would encourage you to consider that identity for the school, the name and the identity, bringing everything into alignment and bringing everyone on the same page. My, my last comment is, I went to Central High School of Duluth, I'm now part of this Alumni Association, I can't find my logo. There are a million different Trojan Head logos out there. None of them are what I remember as my Trojan Head logo, because that file has been lost. So again, through migration of time, your logo has probably taken on a few little idiosyncrasies that were not the way they were supposed to be in the beginning.
So we could, we could have a local guy do the logo, we could.
You could.
He, this person did.
And I would encourage you to have brand standards set with that. And that means written down, everybody follows, colors, palette, style, what, you know? If it's vertical or horizontal or whatever it is, it's important, how the big brands do it.
A standard, standardization.
One more question, Bob, I love it.
Okay, so let's just say for argument's sake, we don't do the logo.
Okay.
We do the brand. Does that, okay, I'll just say it, Blue Streak Elementary, whatever it is, okay?
The name?
The name.
Okay.
So we involve staff and students and things like that, and they pick something. Is that still twenty thousand bucks?
Are you saying they pick it independent of me or with my help?
I'm not quite sure how we're gonna do it.
Okay. It's, it's good to have a group of people together, but not too big a group.
Not too many.
Yes, six to eight is what I'm recommending, because more than that, it gets really muddy. I've just seen it go, you know, down a rabbit hole and a year later, nobody can decide. And you spend all the money and there's nothing to show for it.
So what I'm saying is, is if, if we have eight people in a group and they pick a brand.
Yep.
What does that do to the overall cost of the proposal?
So you, uh, so you're recommending that I do not the logo design, but the naming part?
Yeah.
So split it apart?
Okay, just.
Is that what you're, is that what your question?
That's the question.
Okay, so then maybe throwing into the local guy to do the branding piece? The identity piece?
Can we name it, could we do that logo and naming it?
I think we probably, yeah, I think you could.
Is what I'm asking, maybe.
Just the marketing piece is my word.
It would be just the marketing.
I think the communication piece is what we're all kind of looking at more, cause I mean, we definitely do need to advertise, but.
That's what we're asking.
So the question is, how do we put people together? And it comes to a consensus of what the naming should be. We have Joel Maturi Field, but it's a football field, but, you know? So who gets to pick the people? I think, you know, we need to have at least one or two board members on there, so then we go from the staff and then kids.
Right.
Who gets to pick them? I'm not against the advertising, I think it's a fabulous idea, I really do.
I like to call a communication, not advertising, because advertising comes with cost.
I'm older.
And communication doesn't, it's about, it's about, um, relationships. And storytelling is really your communication aspect. Advertising is where you're actually spending money to do something and we can do that later on. If that is, like, if there's a enrollment push, you can do advertising, but that would be a separate, outside of this communication plan.
Okay, alright.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Because there's a, you know, already the spending money thing is not comfortable, so, you know, just thinking communication, telling your story to the, the greater Minnesota community is really the communication aspect.
Okay.
And the logo you guys can decide on, but I get really anxious about making sure that everything is good there. Hence the Trojan Head logo that I can't find. I don't even know what the colors are, so, you know, and again, you might have people on staff and people locally that can help you with that project. Uh, we'd be happy to help there. After the school gets named, if you feel like the person locally is not providing what you need, maybe you start there. And you say, hmm, it's not really too great, let's try something else, then I'm happy to talk with you again. And maybe we do something a little different with the identity.
Fair enough. Okay, so there's gonna be a vote on this report tonight.
Okay.
And.
I entertain any other questions you have, I know it's, it's, um, a lot to consider, but it is important and exciting and a long process, so you need to continue to have some cadence with, with what you're talking.
Yeah.
I think I have my email on there, so feel free to send me any emails if you have any further questions. Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I have no more questions.
Glad the roads were better this time, thank you for coming.
I know, the last month was nice.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Ingenza and ARI building update.
And Jackie is online with Ingenza and Rochelle with Ingenza.
Katie with Architectural Resources.
And Lou with Ingenza.
Jackie, would you like to start off?
Jackie, you're recognized.
I'll take it, I, uh, thank you guys for letting me chime in virtually, I apologize, I can't be there in person, I had some surgery on Friday and I'm forbidden to drive, uh, for the next couple of weeks, but I can talk to you this way, so thank you, um, for allowing us. Um, but I think, um, our purpose for tonight is to just really answer any questions that you have with, um, our role in this process. Questions that, you know, we haven't, um, already answered or, um, demonstrated to you. And then any questions, um, regarding how we invoice or, or how we bill. And it's important for us to, you know, make sure that your questions are answered, uh, because we were hired to represent the district. We are an extension of Chisholm Blue Streets and that is our role in this process. And really what that means is that we manage the budgets, we manage the process, we manage the bidding and we manage the, the construction, uh, dollars and the contractors. So it's important for us to, um, make sure that you're comfortable with how we move forward in this process. I just wanna say it's, you know, the exact same way, very similar to our previous project that we done with you. Uh, we were a program manager and represented the district in that process. And, um, I thought, uh, you know, we did a good job, we came in on time, we came in on budget or under budget, which allowed you to do some additional projects. And hopefully, you know, was the reason why you decided to move forward with us on this referendum planning and execution project. And so I just wanted to be here, um, to answer any questions that you have in regards to, to that, to our roles, to our invoicing, uh, just to make sure that you're comfortable. Uh, we want to make sure that we maintain our focus on the process and that we're doing what we were hired to do so that the end result is exactly, um, how you envisioned it when we started, started this process.
Okay.
Thanks Jackie.
Sure.
Rochelle?
A little update for you and, and on a monthly basis, you'll get these, um, board updates. So if you ever have any questions, send them through to Bob and Adrian and I can answer them, but the, the main focus this last month and, um, Katie will update you even further, but has been on, um, design meetings with user groups. And it's, it's been a lot of fun, we met with all the staff at VON and staff at Elementary School here. And we do that to, to hear their wants and wishes for the new facility. And then we can take that and see if, if we can fit it into the new design and how it will fit. And so that was fun, we got to meet with all of the different groups on February first and eighth. Then we were able to tour multiple facilities. Um, a large group toured the Grand Rapids East Elementary, which was built in the last three years. And, uh, that's a K-five building. And so they were able to see a two-story building for the same grade levels that they'll have. And then, um, some, a smaller group toured the bus transportation facility there, the maintenance and transportation facility. And then they, um, a small group toured, toured the Hibbing Elementary, the Early Childhood Learning Center. And then we had a large group tour the Laurentian and some of you were able to attend that as well. So that's kind of been our focus right now, so that ARI can take all of that input and then bring it back and, and put it into the design. Through that process, we've also met with your admin design team to update them. And we've, um, tweaked our, what we call the space program, which tells us how much space we need in the new elementary and make sure we get all of the different spaces accounted for. And so we were able to meet with groups to, to make sure we had those spaces in place. So, I don't know, who wants to go next?
Anything to add?
Yeah, no, I think you've covered it, um, artists meeting with the, uh, design team will be the twenty-fourth. It's not this Friday, but the following Friday, that we'll be able to start bringing back some high-level graphics and concept designs, um, from all the information that we gathered in the last month, so we'll start seeing that, um, in a graphic forum here, uh, starting next week. That will start develop, developing conversation about locations of facilities and how it connects back to the high school and more of a campus view of, um, how these spaces will interact with what you have now, um, and the renovation of your existing campus. So that's when it starts to get fun, when you can actually see it on paper, so that will happen here. So that will happen here on thirty minutes.
I believe we're still on track for the timeline that we we shared with you, so design will continue January through September. Bidding and negotiations will happen probably around October and then construction will be able to start spring twenty four. Occupancy right now, fall of twenty twenty five.
And so those meetings that you guys have are construction? People are on that, are the ones that are on the construction committee are included in those meetings?
The design team committee, yes, yes, from the district.
Yeah, so like. Mark would be and Bob, you guys are? Aren't you guys on the construction?
It's finance.
This is the admin, this is your admin designing right now.
It's just a. Just admin, okay, so but how? How does that, I mean, with if you're gonna start doing like the design and stuff, I mean, wouldn't our construction committee be on that or no?
If there's people we should add to that, just let us know, but right now, it's the it's the um folks who were delegated by the district to be on this design team. And it's primarily your administrators in this, the areas.
Right.
Uh huh, yep.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, I mean, you.
There's some, there's some teachers too.
Yeah, yeah.
There's curriculum, there are two curriculum um folks are on there and your um.
I'm just wondering, yeah, I, okay, I just am thinking that.
Personally, actually, I want, I want the people who are gonna be in the building.
Right, right.
They don't need, you know.
Right.
Having having the most meetings about design, because they know what space is maybe, they know what the space seems to look like, so.
Yeah, we'll have a checkpoint back with the teachers again, you know, once we get to a point that we're comfortable with kind of the high-level concept. Um we'll be able to come back again for additional information, both from the teachers and we'd be happy to come back to the board, present where we're at, you know, kind of do um a check because we go through.
Oh yeah, maybe just as like a.
Yeah, I understand, I I get that, that construction, one of the construction starts.
But I just, I just wanna be sure that, you know, we're all on the same page.
Yep.
So you guys are doing the design, you've incorporated ideas from staff and from administration. And so when it's finally done, the final you know, then you come to us, you say, here's what we think. The budget's thirty-two million dollars, you know what you got to work with. And so here's what we think, staff is happy, they may not get everything they want, but if you don't ask, you'll never get it, so. I've encouraged staff to ask for what they want, and if you can squeeze it in, we'll do it. I don't have a problem with that, but this is in your hands, it's out of ours. And that's where I'm trying to, you know, I don't mind members, you know, asking questions and this and that, and they should. But um we're not involved in the construction, we are not. They, you, we don't hire the contractors, we don't solicit the material, and we just, that's what you guys are here for. And I have an appreciation for that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, we do do budget checks kind of at each phase, so as we get through what's called schematic design um phase, we're kind of talking big picture pieces. Uh Rochelle talked about some of the different spaces. We look at kind of high-level square footage, you know, where we at, where's the market at, and we we use that as a as a tool as well to influence the design, so we feel as confident as possible that we stay within that that budget with what we're building. And yeah, we've, I think we've been pretty honest about where the budget is and don't worry, staff is there, they're asking.
I expect nothing different and I appreciate that, I do.
We had really good feedback and there's also a Google done, at least started after the tours, where they've been sharing more ideas. I mean, a lot of good input.
So Mr. Chair, I I do have a question and and Jackie had briefly mentioned the invoices. And I come from a a different world, so to speak. You said that you're gonna do budget checks as the construction goes on, and I'm assuming you're going to be uh checking with the general contractor to make sure that they're on their budget. Now, being that I I came in after Injensa was hired. I guess my question to Injensa is uh detailed budgets from Injensa. What I'm used to seeing is um Rochelle is working on or worked on forty hours of whatever it is, you know, at X amount of dollars per hour and Lou, same thing. But what we've been getting is, or what we got was the initial invoice and I know that was, that there's a drawdown on the on the monies or the funding. But and some of that was for other other work done prior. But don't you guys do that? Don't you send us a detailed invoice?
We we bill at industry standard is we bill at percent complete. Um that's how essentially the entire industry works for these types of projects. Uh the contracts that were drawn up, you know, reviewed, they're based on American, you know, Institute of Architects and their their standard template um contracts, which are all percent percentage complete. As I've never invoiced any other way or ever seen it done any other way for these types of projects. It's it's industry standard to do it percent complete.
Right, and I just wanna clarify that our role is the construction manager, the program manager. So there isn't a general contractor, we are the program manager, the construction manager. So it's our job to make sure that we're managing those contractors and ensuring that they are under the budget. And and getting the work completed as to plan.
Yeah, we we break out, there'll be, we just built a uh a new elementary school, I think we had thirty-one or thirty-two different construction contracts that are direct direct to the owner and as an agent to the owner, we we manage those uh for the district. Um so the advantage of doing that is if there's a general involved, if it's the one contract, but they're putting a markup on every single one of those like thirty, thirty-one different um divisions, um where this bypasses that and we do all that, we manage all of that, which including the budget on behalf of the district. We sit on the same side of the table.
And then kind of we went through that element.
We're with the district, we are the district. I mean, we're we're essentially the construction arm of of Chisholm Public Schools.
So.
And I'm I'm hoping that's, you know, kind of why you hired us to represent the district and.
I I guess. Yeah, I I guess I'm not getting my answer.
We do that uh with the previous project that we did for you. Um and then with, you know, all our other clients, is is what we do, it's what we do well, is um manage these cross, these projects.
So what I'm getting, let me, let me just see if I get this right. You have an electrical contractor, just for argument's sake. And they put thirty-some hours into an area. They you, they build you.
They build the districts.
They build the district.
Construction contracts are to the districts.
So the, so the electrical contractor bills us.
They they submit a pay application, yeah.
And you guys are managing the budget, which we have a
Are they okay to pay? Or have they done what they said they've done in their pay application? We review that, review it with ARI as well, and then approve that, and then come to the district for approval, typically on a monthly basis.
Oh. I can see that. I I didn't understand that. So. We have electrical contractors and tell them, say, one of them gets the job. We could be getting an invoice, the district, again, from them, not you.
Correct, those are to the district. All the construction contracts, that portion of the budget is all direct to the district and we we manage it on behalf of the district.
I think they'd recommend whether or not it can be paid, you should pay it because the work is done and.
Correct, right.
The work has been done.
Has been done. And so I think Mark, I I think that the difference in how how I understood it when we approved the contracts is that rather than paying a general contractor and everybody underneath, you pay Injensa and they and they're their their cost is a percentage of the completed project. And so it's it's a different, and their cost is fixed to a certain extent. There's some overages and then that's hourly, but.
If there is any, if there was anything additional to, but what's on the table right now is fixed.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the table, it's a fixed, it's a fixed, it's a fixed cost.
Well, maybe that's the thing, it is fixed, it's already been established.
I I understand that, I'm gonna make sure that we're getting our bank or a fund out of Injensa.
That that cost. And I have, I mean, I I will speak up for Injensa, but say, I personally, we have been getting our bank or a fund, so. That's just my personal opinion.
But just, I think what I'm trying to understand is, I think Mark is what Mark's looking for is, okay, we get a a bill from electrical contractor. And they're saying, we did this for thirty hours and the electrician got paid X. Okay? Do you, you overview that? You overview that and.
All right, no, we're not, we're not at that point yet. So right now, we're just in the design phase.
Correct.
Have your total fee amount, which is the amount that it takes to design the project. And then you have your execution amount, and that amount is what legally has to be bid out um for work, and that's the amount that we manage and kind of itemize for you as those bills come in. Our fee amount is progress billing. And so what that means is, just like anybody else in the industry, we're billing on a percentage complete of phase. So as we go through that design phase, there's a certain percentage of the schematic design that's completed, a certain percentage of the construction document phase that's completed, and that's what we show on our, and that fee is fixed. So that fee only moves if there's additional scope, significant scope that's added on.
I I understand that.
And so that is the amount that you approve and that's the amount that we're operating within. That doesn't increase, um unless, again, you add some additional scope on and we have to design more work.
Mark, you got a question, Mark on your face.
No, I I I don't. I I I completely understand when it comes to the construction part. I'm talking about Injensa. Yes, I understand that you have fixed drawdowns as a percentage of the total cost of the project. But in a hundred and whatever, seventy thousand dollars. What what did we get for the hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
What work was done?
What work was done?
Design work, and so we still want to invoice a present percentage of that design work was done.
All assets in their hands.
And that's how everybody in the industry does it. So this is, you know, not anything new, it's based on that AIA industry standard. And also what we've outlined in the contract on how we would build. And the fee is for design work.
I I I get that, Jackie, I get it.
Okay. And I and I, you know, um I think, you know, what I'm hearing is how do you as a board understand or know that we're doing what we're supposed to do. And I'm hoping that uh we were able to convey that when we interviewed for the work. And then also in the list of references that we uh gave while we were interviewing with existing clients that would say that we do uh what we said that we're gonna do.
I think it's just hard for Mark because he wasn't here from the beginning to see all the hours and the time spent
Yeah.
to get to where we are today to know and trust Injensa the way that we've been able to learn.
Well, it's a little bit different. I think that the list that you're providing us with the updates of what's been going on, the one thing that's missing today, I think, Mark, is the dollar figure. Like, we spent this time doing this, this is what you go for that.
Exactly.
Right? And so I guess how I, how I think of it is like when you build your house, whatever, there's a construction hole. My general contractor would go and take a draw and he did not give me an otherwise list of what he was doing, but my work was getting done. And so as long as that work was getting done, I knew that's where my money was going. Right? So and then that's, that's how I do it. And I saw the list of the information that you guys did. I know you're meeting with the teams, I know you went on the tours, I went on the tours myself, so that's, I guess, when you see the, as the product, the product comes, that's, I think, for each section. That's how I look at it anyways, so.
It's hard to show a lot of it too, because it's a lot of, it'll become very graphical soon and you see designs and pages on top and pages of sheets with all the notes and all the instruction documents, that's a little easier to see. At this phase, we're having a a ton of discussions, walking the buildings, you know, site, that kind of stuff, it's if there isn't a.
Of the data gathering, so much giving.
Yes.
But then there is gonna be a design plan that's gonna go through, that's gonna be presented and so that's all, that's all work, that's the back, you know, two hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, and from the, from the design standpoint, every district I've worked with, at a, the scale of the size project, it's always been on a percentage base. I mean, there are hourly contracts that are, that we've done in the past, but at at this level, um you wouldn't want us to keep track of our hours.
When I think of, there's times we have a meeting where there's, there's ten or twelve people at that.
Yeah.
You know, to discuss the details of things, so it's, you don't see that all the time, so you don't know what's happening.
Basically.
And I'm hoping that's, you know, what the the board updates, the documents that Rochelle pulls together will help with um kind of the behind the scenes and and what's happening. And if not, then, you know, we should add more detail to that.
So, just so I can be clear. An invoice comes from a contractor that comes to us, but you reviewed it, correct?
Correct, yeah, typically that they'll submit it through us as a, as a construction manager, it would all come through us.
And then you. And then you would say, yeah, they did this, it's okay.
Correct, yeah, we could say, uh come on, you're not quite there yet, or yes, this is okay.
Okay, alright. Anything else from the members on the building project?
No, that was great, that we can, people got to tour.
Yeah.
New constructions around here, hope that was a nice opportunity. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I was explaining to everyone to us.
It wasn't that, it was bathroom.
I appreciate the two years worth of work that it took to get to this point. And the strategic plan and everything, and and I know Adrian's been following that strategic plan and henceforth, some of the things that are coming, you know. Um but thank you guys, I really appreciate it. Anything else from them?
And then we we thank you, we're actually really excited to see this unfold and uh see what the end result will be, so we're um, we're happy to be on board and then thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thank you.
Guys, Katie has some information.
Oh, sorry, Katie.
Mark.
It's the next step.
Okay, so.
It's the next step.
That's a good one.
Yeah, bus barn.
The next item on the agenda is the bus barn. Everything's exciting about the bus barn.
I'll pop the press. Okay, so um as part of our data gathering opportunities and as we've um started review your existing sites um and what it will look like to attach the future elementary onto this campus. Um we are also thinking big picture about site access and space and how many parking and how to get in and out. So there's a lot of conversations that um also has to happen in regards to the campus as a whole. And um the bus garage has been one of those conversations about the existing condition and location of where it sits now. Um and we've had a couple of opportunities, look at some existing buildings in the city that could be potentials for the bus garage. And so we spent most last week um just kind of developing an outline, because I think there's gonna have to be some decisions made and some pros and cons of the um individual options that we have to the table. So um option number one is just to keep your existing bus garage and basically not do anything to it. Um currently, we had a structural review that was completed prior to your referendum, so if I look back at this date, it was done um in September of twenty-one, and I have a hard copy of it and can also share that with you guys, if anybody doesn't remember what's in here, you guys had a ton of information. You know, we did all of the buildings and so we've got a full structural report um that was completed in twenty-one. Um the basis of the report is that it's four to five out of ten, which is um a very high score from a structural standpoint. Um the exterior envelope is in a condition that um would be pretty tough to to recreate, to resurrect. So you've got water infiltration that's been coming through, there's some existing top lining that needs to happen. The rough structure itself um has signs of failure. And the um the two pieces that I pulled out of the report specifically um is that structurally, this building cannot be economically modified to store larger buses. So not only the length of the buses, I think we've all seen the picture where the mirrors are poked in the front, um but also the width of the buses, so there's columns that are um running down the middle of the building. Um and so there is, there really is no structural opportunity to make that any wider. Um, and so there is, there really is no structural opportunity to make that any wider. Um, so therefore you are really limited to the existing bus size. Um, and the other item that I pulled out of the, um, structural report is that the building envelope issues um, concerning the moisture control are significant enough to weigh the repair cost against the replacement. Um, so our recommendation as a design team, uh, our, uh, architecture, architect lead and engineer did walk through the bus garage last week was like. Um, and after reviewing the reports, um, our recommendation is to not invest any money in that building. And, um, long term, it's not what we would recommend the district moving forward with. Um, the limited amount of work that would need to be happened and for your rough structure, um, still would not provide the space needs that you would have for your buses. So to put any sort of time and effort into that building at this level, um, was not something that as a team we're recommending moving forward. So, um, option number two would be to look at, um, demoing the existing building and rebuilding a new bus garage on the existing footprint. Basically just taking it down, um, right sizing that bus garage so it fits the needs of the buses that are today. Um, so you've got nine buses, then you have a handful of vans and trucks that would be located there as well. Um, it would be on campus, and, um, we do believe, um, from the high level study of the site, that there is availability for parking to be able to maintain this bus garage on site. Um, we recently bid a bus garage at the, uh, um, Bremer School District this summer. Um, so it's very new construction cost, it came in about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And so that is the number that we're using as a budget number moving forward, because it's very similar to what you would need here as well. So, um, your estimation would be about ninety-five hundred square foot for the bus garage needs, and so if you do the math, that's, uh, ninety-five hundred dollars times two fifty brings us in at a two point three seven five for a bus garage. Plus you would have the cost of demo, um, to get rid of the existing building. So, option number three, you could do a new build on a new site. Uh, that ninety-five hundred square feet would stay the same, at the two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, so you're still at the two point three seven five million to do new. Um, but that would not include the cost of site or site prep, so it, you know, we don't know if there would be utilities there, obviously there would be proper some parking, um, and the, uh, associated cost that would be. And just finding a site, you know, I don't know what would be available, but if you were to start from scratch, um, this is just to give you some idea to compare your options moving forward. Um, option four, so we have the opportunity to, um, tour the H Lawrence Building that's down by the lake, so the H Lawrence light building. Um, that cost, so we would anticipate that it would be about one point five million to renovate that to, um, provide the needs for the maintenance bus and the administrative team, which would be like the superintendent's office and, uh, associated staff. Um, plus the cost of the, the building itself, um, which we're just showing at the full price at the four hundred thousand would be about a one point nine million dollar investment. Um, notes that I have it, um, asterized that this also includes the two thousand square foot of space for the district office. So in option two and three, ninety-five hundred square feet is bus only. Um, that two thousand square feet for the administrative team would have to be found either in the new elementary or renovation of existing space in the high school. So those aren't apples to apples numbers, there's a little bit of a difference there. And then option number five is the tour of the H Lawrence Building, uh, off the highway, to see if there is an option there. Um, and we did a high level, um, quick study of that site, and it's, the, the overall site's just not adequate. You don't have enough room to accommodate the number of buses that you need and provide, uh, traffic pattern in and out safely. And so that one really, um, came off the table. So, again, we're in data, data gathering, we are not moving forward with any option. Um, but these are real, uh, real options that we wanted to bring to the table to start having some conversation as we develop this schematic design. And we get through the design process, the bus garage decision is gonna have to be made, um, shortly, so that we can identify where it sits and, um, how we wanna move forward with it on site.
And there was a, a potential sixth option we were going to tour today that we had set up, and that option fell to us.
Yeah.
Yes. Katie, does option four include site prep, soil testings?
Yeah, so there'd be very little site prep on there, um, parking was only already developed. There's a little bit of the two minutes that we would have to bring around the back of the building in order to get the buses in and out of there. Um, but the traffic coming through that, um, like building, uh, was in pretty good condition. So, um, there is a little bit of site prep number already included in there.
Soil testings?
Um, I did not do soil testing there, yeah.
Cause I think you're probably gonna have to.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we know it's sitting on the water, yeah. Yeah.
Well, well, and you said we have to decide when to get.
You know, like shortly, I mean, it doesn't have to be a decision made today. I think if there was one that we were finally leaning towards, we can start putting that in our schematic design concept. Um, you know, the, if we're gonna keep it on site, it would be nice to just have that as an explanatory option. Um, so as we're developing parking and access in and out of the campus, that we would know whether or not we should be, um, taking that into account or not.
And the particular site, just for clarification sake, uh, sake, that building cost number was the last listed price that we included. There's been no negotiation, no talks of any dollar amounts, um, that was last on market.
So, I see, I mean, we have improvements for, you know, the, you said the district office space. Is there not, is there enough room to add office spaces if we tore down the bus garage and built a new one?
Yes, but you would just have to add another two thousand square feet times two fifty, you know, inner two hundred and fifty.
Square feet. Right.
So if there was an ability to, you know, renovate existing space, um, but if it moves over to the new elementary, that cost per square foot raises as well. So there is some value, I'm potentially looking at keeping that there. Um, your existing footprint, we're gonna be pretty limited on size, you know, just because of that corner and, again, providing enough access on there. But it is something that we could explore if it makes sense to keep the district office attached to that building.
I guess when we were going through all of this, our biggest thing was one, one campus, one family, one team, one everything. So, I mean, from what I'm hearing, the thought of having our superintendents and everybody else not here, I don't think is okay. In my opinion, as the school board, as a school board member that's been through this process since the beginning, it's one campus, one family, one team. And so we need to figure out a way to keep the superintendent and his assistant and, or her assistant, whatever it may be in the future here, to all together. So, I mean, I, I, I think that's, we need to have our administration here. They need to be a part of what's happening, I think having that presence is good for the kids. I, I just, I mean, my sister works at a district, she's a school teacher at a district where the superintendent's not on the, she's a teacher, never met the superintendent, superintendent walked by or thought she was a student, told her to get to class. That's sad, that, that is not something that should happen, your superintendent should know who the staff is and be involved. And Adrian's done an amazing job with that, with, you know, being part of our district, and I, I'd like to see that continue.
Yeah, so option two and three.
So, I mean, my opinion as a school board member.
Option two and three would leave your administrative team within the school footprint.
So, for discussion on the existing barn.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's gonna have to come out, how much, twelve feet maybe from, you know what I'm saying, or farther?
So we are not recommending adding any square footage to your existing building, but the existing, um, structural review, um, and the ability to still have limited height and width for your buses to come in and out. Even if we were to add on some additional square footage, you would, you would, you would basically be rebuilding around your existing bus barn, and then the interior guts of the bus barn still would not meet the needs of your buses, so from.
You, you would not, you know, block.
Yeah, I mean, by the time you try to make the existing facility work for your needs, I, I just, it's not something that we would recommend moving forward with our, um, history and design and, and trying to work around existing conditions as this.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
What I'm asking is, we tear it down.
Mm-hmm.
And it has to come out into the parking lot a little bit farther than it is right now, so we can fit those buses in.
Yep. Yep.
Twelve feet? I'm, what I'm looking at is parking.
Yep, so we, again, will study the bus traffic in and out of there, um, and we're gonna be gaining parking on the site and other locations, depending on how the elementary and the high school come together. Um, so we've gotten a count, an existing parking count on goal for us to meet. Um, that area isn't really ideal parking anyways, because it's the furthest point from your front door. So if we're gonna put parking for students and staff and community members, that's gonna be the bottom of the location anyways, so that, to kind of dedicate that to buses, um, maintenance and transportation might be okay. Okay. Yeah.
Just one last question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
The type of building, so if we do new building, are we working on, just for lack of a, center turn more than.
Yeah, yeah, pre-engineered, um, the, the size of the building, you're gonna have some fire suppression that's required. Um, we're looking at, um, you know, wash space, you've got some heated space, you've got workspace, you know, it's really more than just cold storage for nine buses. Um, it, it also would serve, um, some of the maintenance needs that we've heard, um, during our user groups as well. And so, um, that is included in that square footage and cost.
Anything else from members?
No.
Okay, thank you Katie. You too. Okay, uh, moving on, Mr. Kardine, cool filter and dehumidification.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to bring back to your attention, um, some issues that we had earlier with our cool filter system failing and, uh, waiting for, uh, the pumps and, uh, continuing to look at it with, uh, with, uh, contractor to see what, where the, uh, lifespan is and it's, and it's past overdue. So I'm working on, uh, firming up some final cost, upgrade our filters and our pumps, and along with a chemical controller, and then even looking at putting our, uh, pool on its own heating system with the new building. We're gonna have to try and tie that in and maybe ahead of time, um, so we don't lose that, uh, postseason as the construction goes on and that sort of thing. So whether it's through, um, just planning ahead with valves or, or, uh, putting it on its own system, those are things that we're looking at there. And then, uh, as of right now, our dehumidification is down, and we've been getting a lot of, you know, steam or residual heat up into the gym area and that sort of thing. Um, that system was put in about two thousand nine, it was designed in two thousand eight, uh, it's a stressful unit. And, um, we're waiting numbers right now, so one thing, uh, looking back at that, uh, the CFM or the airflow is, it's undersized right now. So we're, we're getting new numbers on that unit, and then once I get that back, um, should have those within the next week, we can have, um, put this all together as a package. Uh, we had some COVID relief funds assisted with the ventilation improvements, and we're hoping to use that money for this, for air quality and, 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 uh, in our public use areas, and, but this is gonna take up a big chunk of that, uh, funding source. So, um, I don't have the final numbers totally yet, but, uh, before next, uh, next meeting, we're gonna be looking for approval on it, I just wanted to kind of give you, uh, a heads up on what's coming down the line and the costs that are gonna be associated with that, but there, again, we have a, a plan in place to, to complete that project. Otherwise, going forward, it's gonna put our, our lifespan of that pool at risk.
So what you're saying is, well.
What I'm saying is, you're gonna have sticker shock, and so I asked him to present that tonight, so that you can take a look at the number.
Yeah.
It's probably gonna eat up half of your St. Louis County COVID relief funds to do this project. And we will make sure we can get that approved through that, um, avenue before that, uh, next meeting on the twenty seventh. But it's, um, a significant investment.
No, it is an important investment.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
But it's a big number, just.
It's a big number.
So, yeah, just wanted to, you know, better represent on that a little bit tonight, and if you have any questions, then, uh, you can ask this, but.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you, Mike. Okay. Next time is a superintendent search, he's leading the room. Okay. So, in your packet, there is, uh, some proposals. I reached out to, uh, MSBA. And I reached out to another company I'd never heard of. The proposals are there for you. MSBA has a three-tiered approach. Um, and this is for small schools like we are. So, I guess I would open this up for special. Um, but I want to give some information to us, uh, to the members from yesterday. Okay. Okay, put my shield up in front of me here. I was approached and received a phone call from the Hibbing chair, Dr. Murphy. His question was, do you want to look at the shared superintendent? Now, I know what everybody pretty much thinks, I don't know how somebody could run two districts, I get that, I understand that. Now, we have collaborated with Hibbing on a number of things, I mean, I could list them all here, it would take too long. And everything that we've collaborated on then with has to do with students, activities, you know, yes, they have the program, but we pay for our students to participate in those programs. So, they're not doing it, you know, we're not just doing it for free. I, um, I'm just as disappointed as the rest of the group as to the business services deal. That being said, do we want to entertain a meeting with the Hibbing board? All of us, or just a committee to go over and find out what they're talking about? And maybe air some of this stuff out that's been coming around? I just wanna find out what you guys think, and to me, um, to me, we don't open up the process. Why, why would we not open up the process? Maybe nothing comes of it, maybe nothing, but we have to try. And so I'm just saying, what would the board be interested in? Would you like to sit down with them? We can set up a meeting which is convenient for us. Do you wanna set up a committee? Do you wanna have the whole board? And what we would have to have is a facilitator. And I don't know who that would be.
Would you like me to start?
Director Rice, the floor is yours.
My opinion is, we found, uh, an awesome superintendent, this board right here, we can do it again. I'm sorry, but I do not wanna entertain any, any meetings with Hibbing about sharing the superintendent, not at this time. I just don't think we're there. I, and I feel, and we didn't even hire a company to find a superintendent, and look at the superintendent we did find. Unfortunately, he wants to retire, well, you know, that's his business. And, but I think we did a fine job, and I think there are superintendents out there that we can do. And I think our, our district is big enough, strong enough to continue with our own superintendent. I just don't wanna share a superintendent at this time.
I will just say this, I think it's an impossible task to run two districts, I don't care. So you look at, you look at business services, two districts. Yeah, look, I mean, look what happened.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and one thing I can't stand in an organization is when they burn people out. You know, I understand, I just don't think that that is something that we should entertain, I agree with Cindy. Um, so, the question is, um, is there anything else, anything?
I would like to, I think it would be good for the two school boards to sit down together, not to entertain the superintendent part, but I think it needs to be talked about because it's public. But I think it needs to be talked about because it's publicly out there. Everybody sitting in this room probably has already heard. I think we need to talk about the difference between the two C words that everybody gets confused. Collaboration and consolidation, because it's been in their public meetings. And we need to know, they need to understand what collaborating together for the, for the kids in the districts. Between the sports and the robotics and all of that, that's what we need to talk about. Because the rumor mill that's going around and the things that are being said, that needs to be squashed. The kids in our districts need to know that they can play in sports that are in Hiving or sports that are in Chisholm or vice versa, whatever way we're sharing. And they don't have to worry about that being ripped away from them because of some board members not understanding the difference between the two. And what that does for our district. By consolidating, we are, we get more funds. We could lose those funds by not consolidating and things, and I think school board members need to understand what that means for each district. So I think we should have a public meeting together and talk about that so that they understand, rather than. The things that have been happening and being said. Superintendent, no. But other things need to be, I think, talked about and publicly talked about.
Shelley.
I agree with both. I think it's with, Mr. Aldrich is great. We all love him, you know, and I think he would do a good job. But if it was a lot for the business office, I think it'd be a lot for superintendent with our project. Just trying to manage that. They have their own projects going on that they're facilitating, so. But I do agree with Danielle too. It would be great to clear up some confusion that we're not like anti-collaboration, but.
I think that they're both right, you know. A conversation, and maybe it's to clear the air.
I agree.
And, and again, I, I'm in constant conversation with the Hiving chair. I see him every week, 'cause we're both on a service co-op board in Mount Maryn. So we chat. And he reached out. And I said, I'll bring it to my board and see what they say. I've heard you, and I understand, and I agree with it. So. How do we? I could reach out to him and say, okay, we're willing to meet. Is it all of us?
Yeah.
Okay, I get, I mean, you know.
For me, I've been here for a long, not here, but in this district for a long time. And I am sorry, I have no desire to sit down with the Hiving school board. And I'm not trying to be mean or snotty. It's a waste of my time, and I am gonna be very honest there. It has never gone anywhere, ever. And it just, for me, I say, if you guys wanna do that, that's great. I would just have to excuse myself and say, I don't wanna be a part of it, because I am not interested.
Well, I would wanna make sure that, I think we're all on the board for the same reason, for the kids. And I don't want any kids not having opportunity, whether it's coming over here or us going over there. And I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page. After watching that video, I thought, oh gosh, are all ties gonna get caught now? That's just crazy.
But if that would be pretty sad, if that's what, what would happen.
But I think there's just a lot of misinformation going around, and we need to clear the air, you know.
The member that was on the end of the table is no longer on the board, I believe.
Oh, really?
I believe. They have a brand new member. Uh, so, again. Cindy doesn't wanna participate, but.
I do.
The rest of you?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mark.
I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't play devil's advocate just a little bit for, for discussion. Grand Rapids does it with Big Ford. Uh, they're also, I believe Grand Rapids is trying to. Or at least talk to NK.
Yep.
A little bit. But with that said, my biggest fear is that they pull the plug, just like they did the business office. Yeah. Now, and I'm sure there would be some sort of clause that they would want, that X amount of time they can. Do that, or we could do that, or something in that nature.
It would probably be a fifty-fifty thing. It won't be, we would be, he'd have to deal with us and with them. If they wouldn't have control like they had over the business office.
Yeah, we talked about that, the MSBA.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day, we talked about it before with Jamie, you know, um. I can't remember, for what reason, and we weren't completely opposed, but with everything that counts, I just don't think it's a good time.
Well, here's the thing. So what, you opposed to sitting with them and talking about other things?
Just see, yeah, just not the superintendent, you know.
Right now, not now.
So. Let's, let, if it's okay with you guys, I will reach out to the chair. And say, our board is interested in having a meeting with you. We need to find a facilitator. I mean, again, I, you know, I've been to a couple of these things and, you know, way. Twenty years ago, we tried this and, you know, it didn't work.
We sat here and stared at each other. Nobody said.
We had a meeting at Iron World, and we had Paul Richmond from the Northeast Service Co-op was the moderator.
And it was.
So the point of it is, is, you know, there's things we maybe could discuss. How can we share classes? How could we maybe do that? Okay? That's for the kids. You know, we have the robotics program. That's ours, and they're coming to us to take, to participate, which is a great thing. I just think that, you know, collaboration. There's money at stake without collaboration. And we all need to know that. Now, I gotta list a whole bunch of stuff here that we collaborate on. Is it enough? I don't know. I don't know. What's collaboration? Do we have? All I'm saying is, we can say to Hiving, here's what we do with you. Do you wanna get rid of that? I wouldn't if I was you. I mean, this is kids and Indian Ed, NLC Transportation, Robotics, let's just go down the list. We do this stuff with them. We, we can't do it with anybody else. They cannot talk to Nashwauk. Because Nashwauk is going to Grand Rapids. So, in my, in my opinion, it would, it would behoove them to speak to us. Because we're, they're on an island. They're all alone now, and we're here. And we have our little niche, and we have our nice community, we got our kids, and we got good, we have good buildings and good staff. So. Let me see what I can line up, if that's all right for the members, and then I'll pull who wants to participate, and those who do, great. Those who don't, okay. That's okay. Sorry if you don't. I get it.
We'll take a second.
So.
Remember Cindy, at the end of the day, it's all for the kids and making sure our kids get the opportunities that they all deserve.
Yep.
So, the other thing, uh, okay, so, like Cindy was talking, we, we have proposals in front of us. You know, MSBA um had a limited search for twenty-five hundred bucks, okay? Uh, School Pro, which I found out, um, I don't know if any of you know Dr. Bruce Miles, and he is with Big River. Uh, company and stuff. They did a lot of searches and stuff like that. This, this guy took over for Bruce Miles, and he's at six grand. Then we got something from the former superintendent in Deer River. That uh. Called Rising Tide. And they would do this for twenty-nine fifty. Now. You know, several years ago, we had twenty-seven candidates for this position. There's no way our board could have done it. Now, I don't know how this is gonna come out. There's no way, I mean, we have a timeline, and that's part of the problem. There's a timeline. So here's what I think, and I'm inviting ideas. So if we. Decide to do it ourselves, which we can do, that's fine. We solicit and advertise. This job. Of, yeah, advertise to, say, the MSBA site, so it's advertised out there. Um, then there's a, another site down in Saint Cloud that does work with administrators, and I can't remember the name, Hiving has it, I know that. Um, and then we have Rising Tide, and we have School Pro. School Pro, to my knowledge, that's a little high. I am not interested in that. So, when we do this. And we get resumes. Where should they send them? Where should the resumes go?
Where were they sent last time? Here.
They were sent to superintendent's secretary. Okay, so, let's say for argument's sake, we get resumes, and we have a, a timeframe. Here's when we will accept your resume. And so they get sent to the school office. Lisa puts them away somewhere, and we close the date. There's the end of the date, okay? All award members review those resumes.
Without the names, right?
Without the names.
Yeah.
So you review them, and then we have to come together in a working session. Just to say for arguments, we have eleven or twelve. We whittle it down. We whittle it down to five, you know? The last time, there were five that we interviewed.
Yes.
If I remember right, yeah. So, we have to come together and agree on which five we think. We should interview, and then send letters out to the other ones saying thank you and all that. So. Here's my thought. My thought is. We send out dates. I would like to be interviewing. If we can. Um, in the. Is that too long? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking for more ideas. In April, um. So we. So we cut, cut off the resumes, say, in the middle of April. And then we all have an opportunity to look at, and then we decide. Cindy says, I want A, B, C, D, E. Mark says, you know, all the down the line. And we get together in a working session, and we make our determination who we're gonna interview. Then Lisa schedules the interviews. And they show up, and they sit right there, and we interview them. Now. I have. Questions. I have some questions that was generated, okay?
I think I still have all the stuff from our last.
I do, yeah.
So.
Cause then we each picked like two questions for the last time, and then we eliminated the last.
So. These things that I have, um. Collective bargaining, student achievement, communication, technology, personnel, safety. And other budgets, things like that. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven categories. I don't know, I mean. If every, if everybody has a copy of these, again, I don't know. This is just something that I found. If you're interested in using those, fine. Um, if not. Let's find more, quite different questions.
Well, and we have time to generate those questions, but yeah, that's.
So, yeah.
Well, even if we started off of those and people that wanted to go back, you know. But we need to have, before interviews, we need to make sure that no, nobody has overlapping questions, right?
Yeah, and I think the last time we kind of said, okay, I'll pay one and two when you, yeah.
So, but, but I just think we've decided that we'll do it ourselves. We don't have to pay anybody money for it.
Yeah. No.
Should we have to pay MSBA to put it on their great website? Is that what we're looking, or?
That is something I don't think we have to pay.
We're actually, cause we're membership.
We're membership, yeah.
Okay.
So, we can advertise to those different sites. I don't think it costs anything. And uh, well, Lisa, could you find out for sure, just to be sure?
And Mr. Chair, I put in there a couple of job descriptions too, which I'd like you guys to kind of go through that, and we're getting one, if you could.
Okay. Now, one more thing. We're gonna do our own search. Let's just say we're not satisfied. And Adrian's gone. Do we put an interim in just to fill until? We have.
Well, that's definitely an option.
Yeah, we, I'm thinking we should.
That would definitely be an option.
Yeah. So, you know, we can discuss that as we move forward, but um. So anyhow, we've decided we're gonna do this ourselves. We have a list of some questions. Uh, people wanna have more, find more, we're open to that. And we'll set a date. For resumes and stuff like that at the next four weeks.
And for the job description, do we want to use the MSB? Cause I think she's asking for us to put one together, so she has it to be able to do it.
I like the, I like the MSBA.
The MSBA one, yeah.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, yeah, that's good.
So, I think that's.
Mr. Chair, the only concern I have with us doing it ourselves is the additional work that may be bestowed upon staff. We've got a new business manager coming in. And they add a little bit, um, plus the job search. Uh, and also, but thankfully, the construction will be going on at the time, but I have some concern for additional.
Yeah. Well, again, let's, I, it's a good idea, Mark, if we can discuss that at the next meeting. You know, what is, what role does this play in it, you know? So. Okay? Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mark, support by Cindy, all those in favor? I oppose, motion carries. It is five forty-six. And I'll be right back.